Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 9th, 2014, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Schlitter?
Certainly. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
And I'm here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise for the Plage of Legion.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item five is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I did get the opportunity to attend the play, Literally Blonde, which was some really wonderful female singers. The guys were okay, but, um, better. And also, the foundation is considering the grants tomorrow night. We had four submissions and they will be making their decisions, I'm sure, shortly.
Good, thank you. Anything else? I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Witkowski and Mr. Nielsen on reelection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2014, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And we have a board retreat on Thursday, April 24th, 2014, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. We have our annual reorganization meeting Wednesday, April 30th, 2014, at Franklin High School at 6:00 PM. And a regular board meeting Wednesday, May 14th, 2014, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM.
I think if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think for, on C, the reorganization meeting, I was under the impression that we said we were going to meet at 5:30 for the tour, and then we will post the meeting for a 6:15 start? Does anybody, am I just the?
I have the 5:30.
5:30 was a tour.
Tour, yeah. But then we weren't sure of the tour time, so we thought if we were safe, we would put 6:15. Is that okay? Is, do you want to?
That is correct, because we didn't want to have people wait in case they're coming to the meeting.
Okay.
So we'll correct that to 6:15.
Can I make?
Can I just ask a question about the regular board meeting on the 14th? I know that three of us have children that are in the band concert that night at 7:30 at the high school.
We'll create an agenda accordingly, maybe where we can.
I'd just.
That's important.
Bringing it up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item seven, reports and presentations. Seven, the assessment report. Dr. Zellmer.
Okay. Good evening. Certainly, schools are more than just their assessment results, but the assessment results are also important to take a look at. And we always start with the caveat on trying to avoid overinterpretation of scores, not putting too much weight on any, on any one thing. And this, this report is a little bit different this year, because there's a focus on the changes that are coming. There's so many changes that you could see on the chart that was in there, this year's assessments compared to next year's. There's more of them, and they take, and they take more time. And there's some additional ones. And the, I thought it was important to, you know, that the board was aware of those, of those changes that are coming. The other part about it is the, the timing of it. The WKCE accountability test is done now, except for science and social studies. And those will be administered into fall. But the big testing is going to be online in the spring of next year. So at this time next year, we still, we won't even have had smarter balanced assessments yet through, through middle school. So we're going to be like absent a lot of state tests for over a year. So that timing is important to be aware of, too. There's a little chart in the report about that we are maintaining a balanced assessment system, where there's three levels. There's classroom level, there's district level assessments that are common, like MAP, and at the high school level, those would be semester exams. And then the third level is big tests, standardized tests, ACT, that type of thing. And if we take a look at, if I could comment on a few results, and then we'll just go to Q and A. But the, if you're interested in reading and math results, there's a couple different parts of the report to look at regarding WKCE. There are the charts that show proficient and advanced, and they show things like the fact that our math scores in six of seven areas went up from last year to this year on the WKCE. They show things like all of the tested grades in fourth, eighth, and 10th for language arts and science have gone up from last year to this year. And then there's the charts in there that showed scale scores, where it took this year's 10th graders, for example, and showed what their scale scores were when they were in third grade, when they were in fourth grade, when they were in fifth grade, on up. And you can see that, you know, the, the learning that's gone on over the years. And this is part of the, the mixed bag when you get, when looking at assessment results, because that is certainly looking positive. A lot of our AP results look positive. And certain growth measures look positive. And then you take a look at some of the disaggregated results with our subgroups. And in previous reports, we always had a statement about achievement gaps and how our different groups perform differently on state testing. And this year, we decided to put a, a chart in there that really showed that. And I'd just like to ask you to take a look at that chart, or I'd just like to comment on some things in that chart, because there's just a couple comments about it. It's the subgroup chart.
Which page?
And, and.
What's the page number, Mike?
It's page number 14. And the first column on the left is all of our, all of our students at those grades. And then, then it shows in the red the percentage of proficient or advanced. And then the black number with the check mark or the number sign is the number of students that's in that, in that group. And I thought it was important to show the number of students that is in a group, because you can look at a group and see 100% and go, oh, boy, that's really amazing. And then you look and there's only five kids in that group. And so it's important for perspective purposes to know how many are in the group. The second title over from the left is FAY. It stands for full academic year. And these are students who have been with us in the district for at least since the previous year's Third Friday count. So it's actually a little more than a year that they, because we test in November. And the reason that they're broken out like this by full academic year is for accountability purposes. They didn't think it was fair that you should be responsible as a district for the scores of a student who hasn't been with you until just now. And so the next column over is non-FAY. Kids that have arrived since the previous year's Third Friday count. And I think it's a, it's a positive for the school district that, and this is true every year, that our full academic year performance is almost always higher than the kids who just got here. So the message, not to overinterpret it too much, but it's so consistently true that it's worth commenting on, that kids who've been with us for at least a year as a group do better than kids who just arrived. So I think that speaks well for the district. And then there are the subgroups on here, male and female, and, and all of the ethnic groups. And way over on the right, the last three columns are ELLs. Those are English Language Learners, SWDs are Students with Disabilities, and the final column is Students with Economic Disadvantages by Free and Reduced Lunch Identification. And so in the comments section of, of the, of the report, it's, it talks about the differences between these groups. And for academic purposes, when we refer to an achievement gap, that's a pretty good picture of what the achievement gap is, because you can see the different levels of performance among the different groups. Also, just like to comment on the advanced placement results. It's, there are two bullet points in the report about advanced placement. The, the fact that we added 100, 110 AP tests last year compared to the year before, and more kids are involved, and significantly about the pass rate was about the same. And oftentimes, you, you don't see that. What happens is, when more kids are involved in AP testing, the pass rate has a tendency to go down. And we didn't have that. And it was recognized by the college board, who runs the advanced placement programming. And we were recognized on the annual Advanced Placement District Honor Roll. There's 477 school districts in the United States and Canada who were recognized for this, and we were one of them. And again, that was for increasing, they call it increasing access to AP, which means your numbers go up. And ours went up pretty significantly while maintaining or also increasing the pass rate. So our pass rate went from 82, two years ago, to 80 last year, still in the same range while increasing the number of tests by 110. So that's worthwhile to, you know, to point out as well. I'd also like to comment that the school report cards that you saw in the report have, all of our schools have a rating of exceeds or meets expectations. And, you know, we think that's, that's a positive thing as well. And so with the future of, of, well, before I get to the future of testing, I have one comment about our WKCE results from fall of this year compared to other districts. I have a chart that's not done yet, because the results just came out yesterday morning at 9:30. You could, you could go online and see the results of every district in the state. And I only got through Milwaukee County. I'd usually give you the report for the four county area, and we'll do so, but I just didn't have the minutes to finish it all. But in Milwaukee County, there's 17 public school districts that are reported. It's the same kind of, same kind of report that they used to put in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, where they had all the, all the districts' proficient and advanced scores out there now, out there. And they stopped doing that, because it was too hard to get it accurate. And so we just kept it going here. But in Milwaukee County, on that chart of 17 districts, we are in the top five out of 14 categories. We're in the top five in 11 out of 14 categories. And so it's, and then in the other three categories, we're at six and seven, and seven. And so that's reading and math at all the tested grades. There's seven tested grades, 14 categories. And Franklin Public Schools is in the top five in 11 out of the 14. So you'll see that when the chart is done. I can email it to you, and it's, it's just a handy reference to have. And finally, about the future of testing, you can see that there's more testing coming, and, and it, it takes more time. Just to put it in perspective, there's, for students in grades one through six, there's, the required number of instructional hours in a year is 1,050. And if you take 10 hours and divide it by that, it's roughly, it's just under 1% of our instructional time is used with accountability testing. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but when you look at that chart and see that our number of hours is going up, it does have, have an impact on our instructional time. So that's it for the comments. If you'd be willing to discuss things about the report. If there's questions that any of us on the admin team aren't able to answer, we can try to hunt it down and get the answers for you.
When did these report cards come out? What date?
The report cards? The next report card will come out in September.
September.
Yeah. It's kind of late, considering that we've had these WKCE scores already, but.
Mike, I did some math on the spreadsheet that shows the school report cards, and I looked at the overall. And in the elementary one, because there were five Franklins listed, I averaged them to find out where would Franklin sit. And then I sorted it by the overall, and we were 10 out of 16, which puts us in the third quartile. And then the high school one, we look so much better.
Right.
Do you have a comment on that, that the, is it just that the longer you're in the Franklin school system, the better you're going to get, or?
Well, we like to think that. The, there, there's actually a bullet point, something to that effect, Alan, where it said the rankings for the middle, middle school and high school were right, right up there.
Right.
And there's no bullet point about the rankings for the, for the elementary schools. And eight or 10 years ago, this was, this was reversed. And the elementary schools were typically out, you know, had higher proficient and advanced scores in reading and math on the WKCE than eighth grade and ninth grade. And I don't know an answer, an answer for that. I don't think there's an easy soundbite answer for that. I think it's positive that our middle school and high school, through all the programming changes and curriculum reviews, have, have improved. I think you'll see, a couple of years back in writing scores at the middle school, and it's on the, it's on the chart that's in there, the writing scores improved, too. And so the Katie McBrides of the world, and the language arts people at the middle school have kind of stepped up, stepped up their game.
And I think, too, you know, these are all hypotheses, but our middle and high school programs underwent pretty major transformations through the review. And they're led by some pretty solid leaders. We supported and trained to do the work. And I'd like to think that it's a reflection of that leadership level at the teacher level. So not that the principals don't do great things to perform general instruction, but we have some really quality, sound people that can assist the staff in the trenches. And I think that's really important, because we work on a train-the-trainer model in the district. And oftentimes, our trainers are asked to move, move out of the district and support other districts. So I'd like to think that has some impact on it, because that's been the biggest shift, the transformations, and that teacher leadership, so they own, own their work.
Well, and it has to be said that elementary is just plain a different animal. You know, an elementary teacher teaches several subjects a day. At the middle school and high school, you have isolated content area people and so on and so forth. In terms of what we try to do and how we try to improve each and every year, to Mike and Wendy's points both, there's a lot of really good things going on. Some of it takes time to get hold of. And I think we're, we're making progress in those areas. But there is so differently, Alan, so different in those grade levels compared to middle and high school.
And I think our, our, our elementary was in a higher quartile, so it's harder to grow when you're up. Our middle and high school had room to get up to that level, and they got there. We've also focused an extreme amount of effort on 5-6, and moving them to more of a middle school philosophy and a middle school experience with a more rigorous programming. And I'd like to think that feeds into allowing the seventh through 12th grade teachers to teach at a little bit more advanced level all the way along, because the kids are coming in with a different experience.
I'd still go with the longer you're in the Franklin school system, the better.
We'll accept that, too.
Yeah.
One thing that just caught my eye, actually, the second time I looked at this, I didn't notice it the first time, is that since 2009, which was only five years ago, we've more than doubled the number of students taking the AP exam and nearly doubled the number of tests. And the pass rate has gone up, so, I mean, that's, that's dramatic.
It is. It is. And it, it's another thing that, a couple other things jump out at you from that AP section. One is actually an error. There's, there's a typo on one of the courses where it showed 150 kids that were, were taking the course. And it, I don't know how that got there, it's only 18. And I'll tell you what that is. It is in, it's on the second page of, of the report on AP. It's in U.S. Government and Politics.
Let's take Alan's viewpoint and just say it was 150, we're good.
Yeah. Yeah, we could really get a national award then. That's really only 18. But the real number that jumps out is in psychology. And it's, there's so many kids that take psych, AP Psychology. And I talked with Mike Noack about that. And he, he said that it's, it's accessible to all kids. There's even some ninth graders who can take AP. And it's kind of a gateway to other AP courses. If you want to get started in AP and put your toe in the water, AP Psych might, might be a place to go. Plus, the teachers are excellent. Jeff Bobbiash and Brian Karlewich, and I think there's one other teacher, I can't remember right now. They're, they're kid magnets. And, you know, they're, they're good with the kids, and they, kids flock to them and perform, so.
And the kids sell it to other kids. It has that kind of reputation.
Is there a training social studies in, or what is your background for teaching psychology?
For teaching psychology? Well, I think it requires a social studies degree. However, all the AP teachers go to special training on how to do AP.
But, but they both carry different certifications. Jeff Bobbiash has some psychology background. I'm not sure of the DPI license, but that's a, very much a passion of his.
And some of our AP teachers have even gone to scoring sessions, where they will score AP tests from around the country. And they really become deeply involved in understanding what the requirements are for those tests. Anything else?
Any other comments?
I had a couple questions I had sent you, and you, you'll follow up on those?
Pardon me?
I had a couple other questions I had sent you. I guess on the, the scale score group. And if this is going away next year, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But I'm just trying to get an idea of what the numbers mean, in going from one to the next.
The numbers on the, the left side of those charts are fixed numbers in a scale that runs from third grade all the way through 10th grade in the WKCE system. And if you kind of think of it as a ruler, and all the percentile ranks and the proficiency scores are based on cutoffs that are placed on that, on those scales. And if you took all the kids in third grade and looked at their WKCE scores and added up their scale scores and divided by how many kids there were, that would be the mean for that group. And that's a dot on that chart. Then when they get to fourth grade, they do the same thing. And you can see that they're, the average or the mean for each group just goes up as the kids get older, because of the learning they're experiencing in school. So that's really all it is, to show how the base number that's used in the WKCE increases as the kids' learning and performance on those tests increases over the years. And the charts, the various charts are there, are to show the different groups. The kids who are in 10th grade are on the first chart, 10th grade now, and it backs them up to third grade. On the second chart, the kids who are now in eighth grade backs them up to third grade. So they're all different groups.
It's interesting how they, they don't grow at the same rate. And when I look at the 10th grade, jump between five and six in their reading scores, I don't know. Seems to be consistent.
Right.
I don't know what that means.
Part of it is, is explained by the, the fact that about 5% of our kids turn over every year. So any, in any class, you know, you think of any, any class of kids is about 320 kids, give or take. And on average, now, some years are different, some years it's more, some years it's fewer, but about 5% of our kids leave, and another 5% come in to replace them. So every year, it's a slightly different group of kids. So, you know, and those kids are, they're not full academic year then, and, you know, there's, so there's variables. That, that explains part of it. Others are, you know, just different groups of kids grow at different rates.
Well, kind of to Alan's point, that the longer they stay Franklin, the higher it goes up. And then as far as the achievement gap, obviously, the one chart, page, it's on page 14, kind of gets at how we're doing there. And there is one group where you, where you do have non-white students doing better than white students. You know, is it, do we learn anything on what works by looking at these numbers? Or, or not?
Probably not. It, a, a chart like that actually maybe gives us more questions than answers. And this is, I think it's part of the reason why schools are changing all the time. You know, we have a personalized learning initiative. We use technology. We've had improved instructional and strategies, because everybody's looking for how to close these gaps. Everybody's looking for, trying to figure out what the, the right formula is. And probably know one answer. And it continues to be a, you know, a stubborn, a stubborn problem. And, you know, if, if you saw, you know, an exception to the rule, it might be an exception to the rule with four kids in that group. And so it's not enough. I mean, you have to run inferential statistical studies to try and figure out, you know, what works and, and what doesn't work. And actually, a certain amount of that is happening through the RTI process, where kids are not responding in the regular curriculum. So they're given individual instruction or small group instruction in an alternative way, and monitor those kids very closely to see. And I think it comes down to different things work with different kids.
And this is our second year of RTI full implementation, or is it longer? This is the first full implementation year for RTI. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Next, we'll move on to 7B, Countrydale, Safety and Security. This is a possible action item. And if you don't mind, I'm going to start this off. And I'm going to recommend that we do not take action on this item. And I'll explain my view on that to all of you after I make some comments, and then have you add your comments to that. You all received a letter electronically, and then you have a letter, hard copy, on the board table that you received today. And the letter came from Mayor Taylor on behalf of the Common Council. And the Common Council of the City of Franklin requests that the city and Franklin School District District work together on a matter of child safety relative to Countrydale Elementary School. And I'm going to, um, enhance the word "child safety." And my question is, when did it become acceptable for the City of Franklin to condone children to walk alone on paths? And in January, Mayor Taylor said, and I quote, "We've been after the reconstruction of that road," meaning North Cape Road, "to fix it up before someone got killed." And he said that during the meeting in January. He said that was a prime reason for advocating that the road be fixed. Then the Common Council proceeded, uh, to, to vote that, and rather than installing sidewalks, um, they voted that there would be three-foot wide, a three-foot wide paved and one-foot wide gravel shoulders on the road. So there are no sidewalks being proposed. And then they came to us after a motion by Alderman Taylor and seconded by Alderman Dandrea, that we work together now after that fact to open up, um, our district property to, um, open up this bike path onto our district property. And we do have a school safety policy that, um, where we want to offer protection of our students and staff and establishment of a climate of conducive, that is conducive to learning for all our students and protection of district property. Also, in November, um, there was a sting operation in Whittanell Park where, um, offend- there were offenders that were caught. And there were some fourth-degree sex, a fourth-degree sex offender that was caught. Um, and other men have also been arrested during the sting operation in Whittanell Park. Also, in Franklin, we have, uh, 16 registered sex offenders, some that do live near Countrydale School. We also have 10 who work in Franklin, registered sex offenders. So, that is my opinion on this issue, that it is not safe for us to have children walk up, walk or bike alone on a path. And as far as us as a board approving this, we give authority to, um, Dr. Patz to take care of the operations of the, of the, sorry, I'm going to just try. Operations of the district and have, um, building and grounds taking care of road, I mean, not roads, but our district building and grounds. So I think as a board, it's not our job to approve this. But if the board wants to do that and take that power away, we can give that directive. So now I open it up to any other comment.
Didn't we already discuss this?
We did discuss this, but we did that just with-
Prior to the letter.
To the letter with some consensus. So now-
Okay.
The mayor did tell that to the Common Council, but they went ahead anyway and sent this to us, to the board. So they're sending it to the board, so now we have to make a decision. Do we want to get, take formal action or just, you know, leave it? We, you know, we have an operation.
Your position was a pretty strong one, though, Steve. You, you were not in support of this, especially with how we would keep this area secure.
Well, it was.
I think the board was in agreement.
Yeah, it, it was, and, and I, you know, if you look at the map alone, um, we have nothing to indicate, first of all, we've never had a request from a parent to have any access off that trip, ever, since I've been here. Mark, I don't know what you. But if you look at that map, there's a potential for these kids to have to cross Forest Home, St. Martin's, North Cape, Sunnybrook, and there's a wooded area along the trail on both sides, as well as along the bordering property of the school. Uh, that's just part of it. I think the sa- the student safety obviously comes first. Uh, Mark, would, would you mind stepping up, please, to the, your mic? And, uh, because we've talked about this pretty extensively, and, and maybe I think it's worth getting, uh, Mark's take on it because he's got some, you know, peripheral things that I think are at least worth the board knowing about, if that's okay, Janet?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? I would, I would look at it from both, from, first of all, inside the fence, in other words, on our side of the property line. What you're going to do is you're going to, it's a, it's a, it's a fairly rural school. It's out in the hinterlands of Franklin. Um, and you're having a back gate that's about 600 feet from the building open. And you're going to have to, you're going to have to have somebody walk, think about it, eight times a day. Once in the morning to open it and back, after arrival and back, at dismissal and back. That's eight trips back and forth. That's a lot of time. But we've also now got a problem with the chance of children wandering out, sex offenders wandering in. We've got a, an unsecure hole in our fence now in our rural, in our rural school. And as Dr. Patz and, and Mrs. Evans mentioned, if you look at it from the outside, it's very secluded back there. There is, there aren't really any neighborhoods. If you look across Forest Home Avenue, there's almost nothing out there. And it is a very secluded area, and I wouldn't want my small children walking or riding their bikes or accessing the building that way. So I think if you look at all those factors, and in addition to that, we provide a bus for everyone. And there are three-foot paved shoulders if someone really insists on walking. It will be safer than what's there now. I think you stay away from this. I think it's a, it's a problem waiting to happen, and we don't want to necessarily open up our back gate. That would be my take on it.
My thing, too, is, I don't know if you've seen the path or been on the path, but it's horrible. And they say about the upkeep and keeping it nice. Well, they argue about the roads they are now. How are they going to upkeep the paths? That's my concern, too.
Right.
Aside from the safety.
Sure. And that part between Sunnybrook and Rossin is incredibly secluded. You can't see it from the road, and you can't see it from the neighbor's yard, too. I was in there, and you can't see it. That's a very secluded section. And then also, as Dr. Patz mentioned, anyone who comes from the south, and some of our students do, the Countrydale students do live on the other side of Forest Home, they'd be crossing Forest Home. That's a 45, 50 mile an hour road. I wouldn't want my child crossing there, either.
Are there any kids walking now? There can't be any kids.
There's a few.
There's a few.
They're very close.
And they're all on North Cape. I don't think there's anybody walking around the back.
No.
Well, and I agree with your comment, too. The first thing I thought was, the safety issue is going to be greatly improved. It might not be where, where it could be, it should have, it had a sidewalk going in, but it's going to be a lot better than what it is now, and so, um, you know, I, I agree. I don't, I wouldn't support, I wouldn't open up the fence in the back.
Oh, yeah.
So I know they generate possible action. Do we need action to say we're not supporting this letter, or do we just not, not make action, then?
Or, or do you do that by consensus?
Um, we already have general operations that we follow, so I don't believe we need a motion if we are not going to take action. I think we just follow our policy. We just have consensus that we are going to follow our policy.
If the board so wishes, I could, uh, draft a, a letter to, to the mayor indicating where the district is coming from.
Well, I believe we need a letter.
Yeah.
Because we have a formal letter here. So if we're in consensus that we are going to follow our policy, uh, that, um, Dr. Patz is in charge of our operations. And it appears we are. Okay.
I think we're, we're all in support that we don't want to open the back gate.
We want to keep the kids safe.
Is, and I think we're hearing that you are in agreement with that. You do not want to open the back gate.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, then item seven, C is Board Self-Evaluation Discussion. Okay, we had postponed the, uh, we had tabled the self-evaluation discussion until today. This discussion will be more in-depth and be used at our board retreat to form, formulate our goals. And, and Mrs. Larson, um, we decided at our, um, the meeting, where you were, excuse, we're going to have a facilitator at that meeting to help us with our goals.
Okay.
Okay. So we are, um, standard A provides responsible district governance. And, um, we're, we're all over the place on this one, as we can all see.
Excuse me, is the board self-evaluation in the library?
Yes. Um, you'll find, uh-
It's general and then board evaluation documents.
Yeah, so we don't want the individual for this one. We only want the general one. I mean, the scales. Let me know when you have it open, and then we'll start.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so ensures accountability, accountability and openness to the public. We have three almost always, and two most of the time, and one rarely. So, um, but, so I guess we just want to just have some open discussion on this, discussion?
How much detail were we planning on getting into tonight versus-
Not a lot.
Okay, because it's still incomplete, so I don't, that's why I don't know how much we can get into.
I wasn't able to complete my evaluation due to the unexpected illness of my mother-in-law and her ultimate passing, so that's why it was not finished. But I will have it ready for you for the board retreat.
Thank you. So, with almost always and most of the time, it, it just, it appears that we're in agreement. We're, we do pretty well with openness to the public. Uh, are there any comments on, on that, anyone? No comments, okay. Seeks divergent perspectives to make decisions. We look pretty well on that. And respects the roles of board members and the superintendent. Also, we're doing well on that. adopts policies based on well-researched practices. To me, um, I'm wondering if this is a misunderstanding, that it is occasionally. Are, are there any comments on that? Is it on the well researched, that there's a question, that someone doesn't believe our policies, policies are based on well researched practices?
I don't know who put the comment. There's five of us think we're doing okay in the areas.
Yeah, Dr. Miller, um, you research, everything that we do on policies, you research, correct?
I do. Um, most of the information comes directly from the WSB or from the advice of our attorneys or from changes in the law. So-
Okay.
Um, there are occasions, certainly when I, um, submit the policies to an attorney for review, but it's not always necessary to do so. So I, I feel that we do our due diligence to research all the policies. Thank you.
And I have to re- honestly remember, uh, going back to the evaluation, if this was as much of a, the board research, the board does well, is well researched in their practices, I wouldn't have any question that the administration is well researched in their practice, but, and again, I don't know if that was my one or not, but-
Okay.
Uh, the board, as, as a board self-evaluation, is the board well researched in their policies and practices? You, you know what I mean?
See, to me, then, that, that's a misunderstanding, I think, as far as, okay. Uh, I don't know if we want to go really in-depth on every one of these questions. I think maybe we want to, if anyone wants to pick anything out of these to discuss. Anything else on, uh, category A?
I, I think item G.
Item G.
Works as an effective collaborative team. We have, and, uh, just going to throw it out there, we have some board members who don't get along, and we really need to overcome that. Because I don't think there's anybody on this board who isn't working for the best that we can do for the children. And we, we need to be a cohesive group. I mean, that's one of the reasons we do things like retreats. And it's, it's not, it's not there.
I said that, too. We can't get past our differences for the greater good.
Well, hopefully at their retreat, we can work on why we have differences.
It's okay to have differences, but you don't have to be-
The root of it.
-degrading or other. Differences makes the world go round, and if you can't open your mind to somebody else's ideas and listen and maybe even adopt that, then you're very closed-minded, and this is not a place for that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to B. Sets and communicates high expectations for student learning with clear goals and plans for meeting these expectations. Do we have any comments on any of these categories? Looks like, uh, we all agree on, uh, the conviction that all students will learn. That's a high priority, and student achievement, high priority. I think we all know what our main priority here in the district is, is student achievement. And standard C creates conditions for district, district-wide student and staff success. Again, the, uh, our staff development is high priority in this district, and student success, as we heard tonight. Miss, Dr. Zomer, any comments?
Most of that section got all high marks.
Uh, when the session, section of, uh, district-wide student and staff success?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And F adopts and monitors an annual budget?
Mm-hmm.
I am the person who whines about the budget and says, "We don't monitor our budget. We don't have anything that reflects the budget that we pass, that we look at on a monthly basis." And if you don't have something that reflects what you pass, how are you monitoring? It's just not happening.
Well, I think we agree that we are slowly working on, um, different processes for monitoring the budget. You know, we are working on that, so. Thank you. Standard D holds district accountable for meeting student learning expectations. Again, we have high marks here. Evaluates the superintendent on clear expectations. There, we have a little, a few differences here. Any comments on that?
I think it's about the goal setting, and we can work on that in the retreat, I guess.
Yeah.
Better goals we have, the better, uh-
Sure. Engages local community and represents the values and expectations they hold for their Ensures the board and district transparency through openness and count- accountability. Um, I think, uh, the majority of us think we are transparent. Um, we, one occasional on that, um, so I think we need to discuss. If anyone thinks there's some issues we can improve on- if anyone thinks there's some issues we can improve on, on that. You can always improve accountability.
I've had something kind of bouncing around in my head for a couple of months that now because of the, this is the community section, I would like to just throw out there as something for people to think about. Maybe we could talk about it some more at our retreat, but I've been wondering if maybe we would want to consider a 360 evaluation for the board of some sort. Because, you know, we have an impression or a perception of how we're doing, but it may not be the same as, as what other people think. And maybe that could help us identify some, some areas, potential areas of improvement. I don't know. It's just one thing. I don't, there might be downside to it, too, or it might be difficult to implement, but I just wanted to, like I said, throw that out there.
Thank you. The communication portion. There's always difficulties with communication because so many people receive their communication in different ways, so it's always a challenge with that.
But to Tim's point, that if this is referring to the board, I look at it very differently than when we're talking about the administration. You know, there's that letter that, that goes out that Dr. Patz writes with the, some community thing. Yeah, I see it coming through, and I don't remember how, but I always look at it. The newsletter, okay, that's, that's going out all, all the time. So there is communication, but as a board, what are we doing? Administration is, are we communicating to the community?
Well, every so often, the board president will write a blurb for that opening doors newsletter. It doesn't happen every time that opening doors goes out, but I mean, Janet's written one. I wrote one when I was president. So I mean, we do communicate.
You need to, are you communicating when you see people out in public? You know? Do you suggest something in particular?
Are you saying, do I have something to suggest? Or do I suggest things to the community when I'm out there?
No, 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 no. What is your suggestion to do that to?
I, I don't, I don't have a suggestion.
That's what I was asking.
I'm saying that the question may not be a valid question. I mean, as a board, are we supposed to be out there talking to the community, setting up tables in shopping centers, you know? Yeah, I mean, what is, when people ask me questions, yeah, I talk to them about it.
You know, a couple of years ago, we, more than a couple of years ago, we addressed this, and I think that spurned, you know, pretty decent attendance at the National Night Out. There was the health fair at the time that was going on. There's board members at the spaghetti dinner, you know, there were board members over there, so you know, different events and so on and so forth. So I think there's exposure.
Yeah, are you making yourself visible in the community?
And we do have the school liaison that we're trying to do and reach out to Alderman, and so we've done some things.
Well, and then when community members send a letter, like with the Sabre Stadium Project, Janet answered all of those letters on behalf of all of us.
That's true.
You know, I mean, so she's, instead of all of us sending letters, she's our spokesperson and responds to those. So she is reaching out to the community on our behalf.
And if you get communication on your own to you, you still are allowed to answer your own communication?
I do. When somebody calls, I return a call if I don't answer the phone with it, then, I mean, I'm doing all of that.
Just doesn't seem like enough?
Just maybe, it kind of seems like I didn't think of it at the time.
And then several years ago, we did try, I think this was your idea, Janet, like, starting the board meeting or posting the board meeting at like 5:30, and then we would have two board members sitting here, so someone from the community could come and chat with us.
We did that for six months.
Yeah, and no one ever came. Or one, maybe one person came, but truly, no, I mean, I would say no one ever came. So I mean, we did try and do those things, so if you have other suggestions that none of us has thought of.
When there's high interest is when people want to talk to you.
Right.
That's when it's, that's, that's what I've noticed.
But otherwise, it's a little sparse.
Well, I kind of looked at it, too, as some of this, you know, is almost like we delegate it to the administration. I mean, the middle one says ensures district information is communicated to the community, so, I mean, we know that it's being done. We don't necessarily do it personally, but, you know, we see what goes out as far as communication goes. And we do listen to people when they come here to speak to us, and most of us went to the sessions on the boundary adjustments and listened to community members there and were visible there, so. I felt like this was an area we did pretty good in. You can always improve in this area, though.
Excuse me.
That was the last section.
Is this something, if I recall, the board said that when we acquired the facilitator, which I'm waiting for return phone calls, that this would be one of the documents we would like that person to review?
Yes.
We're still okay with that?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's almost like after you go through this a little bit in a group setting, you almost want to take the survey over again. Because maybe you didn't feel like, you think of how, the angle of the question, so.
Well, maybe, maybe if people want to add comments or something now, we could forward those to Steve, and he could also include those.
That's why that's why we, you're supposed to use it in your, your goal planning, because you talk about it, so. Okay, thank you. Item eight. I'm look, I'm looking to entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And 19.85 sub F considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, and 19.85 sub G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Do I hear that motion?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Sleder, is there any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Chair. Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Disrupted.
I say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll take a five-minute recess. And then go into closed session. Thank you. Open the door. Item nine is board meeting debriefing. Does anyone have any comments on today's meeting?
I missed our audience.
You missed our audience? Yes, we have been having packed board meetings. That's been very nice. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to future agenda items. We have a human resources report on April 23rd.
Can I ask what that means, or?
I'd like to update you on staffing for next year.
Oh, staffing, okay.
And we, I was asked by Kathy Han from the Health Department to have the Franklin Teens Fighting Tobacco, a presentation from them on April 23rd. Again, we'll have the oath of office on April 30th at Franklin High School at 6:15. And curriculum review process update, one-year implementation update on May 14th.
And we'll put the softball field on the 23rd.
Okay, softball field discussion on April 23rd. Any other comments?
Is there any budget items in the future agenda item?
Any what?
Any budget planning?
Yeah, Jim.
Budget planning?
Budget planning in April, May?
Yes, budget planning in April.
In April.
We can do that at the 23rd, I think.
23rd, next meeting?
Yeah. We were looking at March originally, but then we had a retirement and a comp plan and a few other things going on, so we'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
A vote.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Okay, I'm sorry, that's okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Extension motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:38.